Very well. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. And we're going to call to order our town hall meeting at 11:02 a.m. on Saturday, August the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is in accordance with an office of the governor issued March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. It's extended by the city council for the city of Duncanville. We will conduct a city council special meeting by video conference in eleven a.m. on Saturday, August fourteenth. In order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. We thank everyone for joining us. And we regret having to do this virtually, but as everyone knows, that the virus seems to be having a resurgence. So we feel it in the best interest and safety of all of our citizens to conduct this virtually, and we hope everyone understands. This is an important town hall meeting for us because of the budget process and the budget season that we're in. So unfortunately, we would prefer to be able to do this in person, but we are doing this virtually, as I said, in the best interest and safety of everyone concerned. So moving on to item number two in our agenda, which has received the public comments. And I do have one public comment, and the individual has submitted it and wishes me to read this.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes?
Apologies just for a second, because I don't think we are Facebook Live for our virtual information. So can someone check that?
Yes, sir. I'm checking on that. Forgive me.
We're going to go ahead and proceed. Mr. Hamby can continue working it. And for anything that has occurred in between the time Facebook Live becomes available, we can, we send out an email via some social media that the entire town hall can be viewed in a recording subsequent. We need to get going, because we did have a hard, we did have a hard stop at twelve o'clock. And because of this delay, I'm going to put, I'm going to go add some time to our hard stop at noon to like twelve fifteen instead of twelve o'clock. Okay, so moving on, on to item number two on the agenda is reading citizen comments, and I do have one citizen comment submitted by Patricia Ebert, one-one-five South Greenstone Lane, seven-five-one-one-six, and reading her input verbatim. How many professional advisors and/or consultants such as Friesen Nichols are projected to work for the city in two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two? Question mark. Yes, parks regularly hires contractors for seasonal mowing, and the city is projecting external training for H R and neighborhood services. But how many consultants are projected? New paragraph. Professional advisors and/or consultants are noted in the following areas in the budget. Page one-twenty-five of two sixty-six. Public Works Engineering Program Description. Quote, "Public projects executing the capital improvement plan, P A R E N C I P, for alleys, drainage, streets, and water wastewater utilities selection of consultants." Sub-bullet, page two forty-two of two sixty-six. Debt Management Ratings. Quote, "The city staff at the assistance of financial advisors and bond councils will prepare the necessary materials for and presentation to the rating agencies." End quote. Sub-bullet three. Page two forty-three of two sixty-six. Bond Issuance Advisory Fees and Costs. Quote, "The city shall evaluate the merits of rotating professional advisors and consultants." End quote. End of input from Ms. Patricia Ebert. Thank you, Ms. Ebert, for your input and concern. Moving on, this is the town halls, as I stated earlier. In the budget process, we always want to be transparent and open to our citizens to understand what we're doing. The budget process is extremely important because it executes the due diligence necessary for us to provide the services and safety of our citizens throughout the entire city. The budget process is huge. There have been untold hours spent by our city staff, the executive directors, their subordinates, and council as well to achieve even this point in time where we're almost ready to submit the budget. It is quite a difficult process to make sure that we have balanced processes, balanced books, that the books are clear, the books are correct in terms of the balances that we have, the revenues that are being projected, the expenses that are being projected, and the fund balances that are being projected as well. It is a very complex and detailed process for everyone involved, particularly for us in council who are not professionals in the municipal budget process. But we learn a great deal as we go through this and the process for working with our staff. The collaboration between the staff and the city council is extremely important because we rely on the staff to bring us the best possible information so that we, as a council, can absorb it, digest it, and understand it, and as well as our citizens in a fashion that is not too complex to understand. It needs to be simple, but at the same time deeply detailed so that it's evidence of transparency in the financial dealings of our city operations. So the policy is voted on and approved by the council and serves as a policy document, providing information for what we're doing and goals and objectives for the city with the funds that we have. It's also a plan for using your tax dollars. And it's a financial plan that provides an explanation for the structure and operations of our city. So included in this document are projections for the financial activity that we can foresee, also comparing the information to prior year. Now, this is important because we're looking back, really looking at two thousand and twenty. It was an outlier. It was, looking at that, it's, it's an anomaly. Looking at two thousand and twenty is not really a good baseline, and it's most difficult because what we have to do is we have to go back and look at nineteen ninety-nine, even into two thousand and eighteen due to some logarithmic projections in terms of statistical analysis, and where are we going and what we have at hand for us. So working into two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two for our fiscal budget is more difficult, I would say, and more complex than what we've had to deal with in the past. So thanks to our staff for being able to pull these statistics, look at it, and hopefully that our citizens understand the difficulty as well because of the two thousand and twenty pandemic anomaly. So the communication to our community is extremely important, and that's what we want to do. We want to be transparent and be able to provide information to our citizens because it is their tax dollars that provide the opportunities for us to continue to operate our city in a fiscally and operationally competent manner. Very, very important. So what we have is to walk our citizens through the budget process in about an hour. And this, as I said, that we, as a council, have spent many, many times more than that in that, you know, the number of hours being spent going through this, and our staff multiply that exponentially in terms of the hours our staff has spent as well. So I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Aretha Ferro Menavides, to take us off and take it into there from here. Ms. Menavides, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I will note that we are on Facebook Live, so that is acting. Jennifer, if you start the slides. To start out, as to the community and to our council, we are celebrating seventy-five years of home rule. And so our theme for this budget is celebrating our past while championing our community's future. It is based on the fact that we have a rich history, but we're also starting to now focus on what does our future look like? What does our future operations look like? What does our future city look like? And some of the steps you'll see being taken by staff, focus on that. Next slide. As our mayor mentioned, he went through a lot of our, our purpose. We have a budget calendar that is set not only by council, but also by some state dates in which we've been following. In June, we had our, on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we had a pre-budget workshop. That's where we got a chance to look at what our budget looks like and what is included in the budget, what we expect to see, and what's happened in our past. It was a chance to start to gauge where our revenue projections will be, but also how we performed in the past. On the twenty-second, we received what's called a certified tax roll from D C A D. And those rolls give us an example of what we're getting in our property tax, and we'll talk some more about that. By our city charter, as the city manager, I'm required to file the budget with the city secretary by the thirty-first. And that date allows us time to go through the next steps of our process. On August first, we received our tax rate calculation from Dallas County. That tells us, based on the projected property tax revenue we'll receive in, what our rates are going to be. And these forms help us to start to formulate. We did preliminary estimates prior to that, but we have our, our certified rate. On the third, we did our first presentation of a proposed budget to council, and that was an opportunity for the city manager to talk about, here's what's included in the budget, along with staff and what's happening. On the tenth, we had a workshop with council, and council was asked to, and we'll talk some more about this, to talk about our tax rate. Today is our town hall meeting. This is a chance to share the information with the public, and the publics also, by raising their hand, will have the opportunity to ask questions if they so choose. On the twenty-fourth, we will have our public hearing on the tax rate and budget with our adoption of the budget scheduled as of this time for the thirty-first, a vote on the budget and the adoption of the tax rate. The final day of our fiscal year is September thirtieth, and that is the end of this fiscal year, and we start a new fiscal year in October on the first. Thank you. Couple of things, just want to highlight our organizational structure. As you know, the citizens and the residents are always at the top. You are the folks that we work for. You're the people who drive us. Our council sets policy and gives us our guidance of how to do it. We also have our city attorney and boards and commissions, and those are opportunities for individuals to be engaged and become part of our city. Under my assistant city manager, Mr. Robert Brown, we have our police department, our library, our city marshal, our parks and rec, our fire, and a new office that we were talking about, which was formerly our code office, called our Neighborhood Services Office. And this will be an opportunity for us to really focus on providing community services. Under our economic development, our development services, we have our planning department who's, and then we also have economic development and legislative advocacy. This is where we start to follow the legislation. Under our finance area, our fiscal services area, we have our county utility billing, municipal court, and procurement. That's led by Ms. Adina Atmore, and as I did not mention, Development Services, Mr. August, August Garcia. Under Administration, these are direct reports to the city manager. That includes our I T department, Communication, Budget and Strategic Planning, Human Resources, and City Secretary. And finally, and last but certainly not least, is our Operations and Public Works Department. That is a large area. A lot of our enterprise zones fall there, which includes our enterprise funds, our utility, water, wastewater, building official permits, inspections, streets and traffic, as well as our fleet and engineer. Thank you. Next. So just to recap, our strategic priorities for the city of Duncanville in the future, which was established by council and staff, do five things. One is emphasize high quality of life. Two is reimagine Main Street and city center areas. Three, promote innovative ideas for development and redevelopment. Four, develop multimodal transportation strategies. And the fifth is to advance marketing strategy of the city. And so we try to make sure that all of our things are focused on it. We also have the mechanics of it. We have external, internal, and leadership. In our external, we maximize our city and community resources to improve the quality of life in a sustainable manner. On our internal, we foster a value-based environment where employees are supported and encouraged to develop in an order and to achieve and sustain a healthy relationships between the organization's stakeholders. That's between the community, our internal and our external partners. And last, but certainly not least, is leadership. We project a credible organization image embodying professionalism, compassion, inclusivity, and pride. Own our customers' experience and exceed their expectation. So you're going to hear us talk about our focus is customer service and putting our community first. Next slide. So as you look at our fund structure, we are developed into funds, and that's the one thing that's unique in government. We have our general fund. That accounts for things like our police and our, our, our general functions. Many of that, most of that is funded via, as you'll hear us talk about, our property tax, our sales tax. Then we have special revenue funds. These account for proceeds from specific resource, revenue sources that are restricted in expenditures. An example would be our hotel occupancy tax. Those have things that they have to be spent on. Then we have a debt service fund. As we borrow money, we have a fund that accounts for the payment, for the accumulated resources and payments for the general long-term debt. And then our capital improvement and replacement fund, that's our big items. Our, our capital improvement includes like our buildings. In some cases, you'll see our, our vehicles and replacement funds, our I T and things like that. Next slide. Then we have a proprietary funds. That's considered enterprise funds. These are the business functions that we have. In our enterprise fund, you'll see things like our water sewer fund, because basically what that means is the funds in which we obtained from it, the revenue is used to support the operations of those funds. And so proprietary funds are our enterprise fund. And then last is our component funds. We have the Duncanville Community and Economic Development. Revenue from one-half cents of our sales tax are used to fund this. And some activities you see in this is how we reinvest and create economic development opportunities. Are we, a lot of our beautification efforts happen through this, and this is a major part of. Next slide. So what do we look like this year, our current fiscal outlook? As we're looking at our total revenue, we are projecting a moderate increase in revenue. We know that the impact of COVID and the things that have happened have made it very hard to project what's going to happen. Our revenue projection is for this year at sixty-three points, sixty-three million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Our expenditures, as you'll see, are at sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen. Now, why does one exceed? Generally, you want your revenue and expenditures. We do a lot of projects, one-time projects. Here are fund balances, and we, as a city, try and attempt to obtain and maintain a healthy fund balance. And so you'll see some one-time projects that are funded there through our fund balance. But our overall revenues for this year that are coming in and our overall expenditures, you will find that they are balanced. What are we proposing? And we'll talk some more about this. You'll see our ad alarm tax. There is included in here a two percent cost of living adjustment for our, our staff. We look at new titles and positions, about eight point five new positions. We are not, at this time, proposing a water sewer drainage or garbage fee increase. We know that we're going to, because many of you will hear us talk about our water and sewer. Our water is purchased from someone, and our sewer is processed from someone. We're looking at about eleven million in capital improvements. And our final project that we've been working on is our new P twenty-five radio system. We are allocating one million dollars from our existing fund balance this year to fund our new radios that will fund some interoperability issues that we talk about so that our, our global area in North Texas with Dallas, DeSoto, Duncanville, we will all be on that same system. Next slide. We're going to talk a little bit more about this in detail, but this is where you see our revenues coming in. You'll hear us talk about property tax, sales tax, franchise permits, fines. All of these revenues represent what increasing? So we're going to move to the next slide and talk in a little depth, and I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer at this point, who is going to take you through these and talk a little bit about it. Jennifer is our person who's budget analyst for a while and has been with the city. She is going to be focusing on two things. Our budget management, but most importantly to me right now, is our strategic planning. That's looking at our long-range future and how we start to tie our dollars to our outcomes, to our performance measurements, and to our long-term plan for the city. Jennifer?
Thank you very much. Okay, so again, talking about the general fund, and the property tax being the largest source of revenue for our general fund in our city. I want to start with making sure the citizens have a good understanding of your property taxes and how they break down. So this slide kind of shows you the breakdown of the various entities that your property tax go towards. So about fifty percent of your taxes are actually to the school district. The city gets about a quarter of that, as well as a small percentage for the Parkland Hospital System, for Dallas County, and a Dallas College. The next slide here, just wanted to show you a property tax calculation example. What's important to remember about property tax calculation is that everyone's calculation is going to look a little different depending on the various scenarios that they're eligible for. So a typical resident of the city of Duncanville hopefully has at least a homestead exemption. So the first table that you see there in the green, homestead exemption only, assuming an assessed value of two hundred thousand dollars, and this is for tax year two thousand and twenty, as we don't have the breakdown of the proposed tax rates for the other entities at this time. So I'm using the two thousand and twenty rates. As you can see here, how the city comes to one point four, and the Duncanville I S D is about fifty percent of that total tax bill. And you can see how it breaks down to a total property tax of four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar home. Now, the blue table is taking this a step further to show how that would break out, again, having that homestead exemption, as well as being over sixty-five. As you see how, again, breaks down there with the city at one thousand, two hundred and eighteen, and the Duncanville School District at two thousand dollars there, and your total property tax comes to three point nine. So that's about a nine hundred dollar difference. It's something important to note when it comes to your property taxes that the city does not evaluate properties. The Dallas Central Appraisal District is, has responsibility for the valuation of our properties. And then Dallas County collects the property taxes on our behalf, of the city's behalf. This chart here just kind of shows you a ten-year historical view of our certified taxable property values in the millions. The blue that you see there is our commercial and our business personal property. And then what you see in the green is the residential. As you can see, the residential accounts for about seventy percent of the total valuation of properties in the city of Duncanville. This slide here shows you the city portion only, the city paid taxes. So a ten-year history here, in two thousand and twenty-one, the city, the average city pay tax will be one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. And the table you see there below shows you the last five years of what that average taxable home value is for the city, as well as the city paid taxes, and then the daily cost for services. So in two thousand and twenty-one, the daily cost for service for everything that we provide to the citizens comes to three dollars and thirty-three cents a day. Ms. Adina Atmore, who is our interim finance director, she's going to speak a little bit about the tax rate itself. So Ms. Adina, if you will introduce yourself and. This will be understanding our tax rate. Until Ms. Adina is able to.
Are you able to unmute yourself, Ms. Adina?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. Okay. Understanding the tax rate, this is a complicated calculation, but Senate Bill Two back in two thousand and nineteen introduced some new legislation regarding the tax. It used, the voter approval tax rate, which is formerly known as the ROPE tax rate, some new changes have come about on how that is calculated. The voter approval rate was at a maximum of eight percent above the effective rate. The new percentage is at three and a half percent above the effective rate, or the new no, new no revenue tax rate. And so that's another thing that has changed, is that formerly called the effective tax rate was the amount of money or the amount of revenue that it would take, the tax rate that it would take in order to give us the same amount of revenue that we got in the prior year. And so that's why we call it no new revenue rate, because it's actually the rate that we would, that would give us the same amount of revenue that we had prior year. This slide shows us the comparisons of all the, the different rates, the actual adopted tax rate or the, and the proposed tax rate for two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the new no revenue and the voter approval rates. So these are, gives you a historical view of what is, the rates have been from two thousand and sixteen through what we're proposing in fiscal year twenty-two. And so this year, we're expecting a reduction of around two and a half, two point four percent of the rate. This is the fourth comes, fourth consecutive year that we have actually had a rate reduction on our adopted rate. And just to make note that this is, this rate is lower than the voter approval rate, which is a point zero, point seven zero two zero seven three, and we're proposing a flat rate of point seven zero. Next slide.
Back to me. Just something to note here on the tax rate, though. Again, like Ms. Ms. Atmore said, the no new revenue rate is the rate that the city, where we wouldn't be having any additional revenue to our general fund if the no new rate, no new revenue rate was passed. And the voter approval rate is what triggers an election to citizens if we went over that rate. Okay, so what, how does, where does your tax rate, or where does your money go? So again, as we said, the average taxable home value for two thousand and twenty-one is one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And with that proposed tax rate of seventy cents, the average city portion of taxes per one hundred dollar valuation comes to one thousand, two hundred and sixteen. So how does that break down to the general fund and to the various departments that consist in the general fund? So police, police is going to be the biggest department, and they do get the biggest portion of the tax. Of thirty percent of our general fund expenses go to police. So that equates to one dollar a day. The fire department is the second largest department and gets twenty-two percent of the general fund budget. Our Public Works Department, which consists of streets, our equipment, building inspections, they get nineteen percent of that. Administration and Financial Services, that's the, the city manager's office, the financial services of the city gets thirteen percent of that. Parks and Recreation is twelve percent of the general fund budget. And then lastly, the Community Development Services, that would be our newly Code Compliance Division, our library, City Marshal gets five percent of that budget. So what do you get for one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars per year? First of all, you receive fifty-one highly trained and state-certified licensed firefighter, paramedics, you know, to provide the life-saving assistance to the individuals of the community and their property. You also receive sixty-one highly trained licensed peace officers. Those are the police officers to provide crime prevention, education, patrolling activities, and investigatory work to ensure that our citizens and the community are safe and criminal activities are minimized. You also receive, I'm a finance staff that is continuously recognized with best practices by the Government Financial Officers Association in excellence in financial reporting to ensure best practices and financial transparency and accountability. We are working to ensure that our finances are upheld to a high standard and that we're being accountable for the citizens' taxpayer dollars. Also, continued and necessary maintenance of our streets and our roads in order to prevent the costly or C I P-type reconstruction projects, we maintain over a hundred and thirty-four miles of paved roads. You also receive multiple special events, such as our spectacular Fourth of July fireworks and Daddy Daughter Dance, Boo Bash. Those are just to name a few special events that have been very popular in the past, and hopefully will be able to continue in the future with them. These are special events for the community to attend and enjoy with their families. We also maintain two hundred and forty-four acres of beautiful parks for the community to enjoy, for families to play in. Additionally, we provide over two hundred programs and classes that are offered through the public library, through the rec center, through our senior center for the citizens to, and their families to participate in, to enjoy, to learn, to be educated. And lastly, also resources that we keep the citizens engaged and informed and educated, such as through all the social media updates and the weekly email news blasts, the monthly printed Champion newsletters, our L E D sign and other printed advertisement sources. So hopefully, we're putting your money to good use. So we talked about the, the property tax, the property tax again being the majority of the revenue that we receive. The second largest percentage of revenue we receive is sales tax. As what this chart depicts is again, a ten-year view of our sales tax performance. We went into two thousand and twenty-one projecting a reduction in our sales tax. We did lose a high sales tax generator in our community within the last year. But however, even through COVID, thinking that we would be losing sales tax income has actually performed much better than we could have expected through, you know, stimulus money, through other businesses that have come online through our cities, as well as more individuals are ordering online retailers such as Amazon, and we are seeing revenue coming in from those, from those sources. So we project in the year at eleven point one million, and we are keeping that flat going into twenty-one, twenty-two, not knowing necessarily what to expect in the future, but we do know that we will at least receive that amount. This chart does break down based on, again, as Ms. Aretha said a while ago, that we do receive twenty-five percent of our sales tax that goes to economic development for economic development activities, and the, the rest comes to the general. And the rest comes to the general fund. Just some other highlights of the, the different revenue sources that we do receive. We also receive franchise fees, that is from like electric, a gas cable that's based on grocery receipts that citizens pay for those bills. And it's not an opportunity area or an area of growth for revenue, but it is consists of 1.7 million dollars of our total revenue comes from the franchise fees. Another revenue source is our permits and fees that includes like building permits, health inspection permits, EMS collections, things like that. Again, it's not an opportunity area for revenue, but it is revenue that we do receive that offsets our expenses to provide services to the citizens for inspections, for ambulance services, things like that. The next area is our court fines and fees. This is for code compliant fines as well as, you know, speeding tickets, things like that. It has been down with COVID and less contact type of activities. So we're hopeful that it will pick up in, in the upcoming fiscal year. But again, it is down because of the COVID and not as much contact. Another source of income that we've seen decline over the last year is our interest on investments. So the money that we have in the bank, we do put it away on investment and get interest off of those funds. But however, the, the interest rates are really low right now. And so that's why we've seen a decline in this source of revenue. Another source of revenue comes from our recreational fees and that is like buying memberships to the rec center and the senior center as well as facility rentals. And then lastly, our other revenue, that would be like reimbursements for we, we share certain services with other best southwest cities. So we get reimbursements for our, our school guards, for example, or for our emergency manager. So it would be revenues for that sort of, that sort of activities. Okay, so that kind of just sums up the general revenues. I'm going into expenditures. As you can see, these is the department breakdown. And again, like I said, the police department, the fire department, they have the most portion of the general fund expenses as well as the other departments. So I'm going to kind of just briefly walk you through the different expenses. So what's important to highlight here is that this is a balanced budget. So what's that mean is our, our revenues exceed our operational expenses. So as highlights here to the expenses, so 2% COLA increase for our full time and part time employees. The chart that you see here, just to give you an idea of the citizens served per employee. We lean to the left, which means that we are a leaner organization than some of our other counterparts in the metroplex. We serve approximately 150 citizens per employee. So we do more with less staff. Another important highlight when it comes to personnel is that for the third consecutive year, we've received a rate pass on our medical insurance and actually they are reducing our rates by 1.1%, which is an extraordinary thing. As other organizations and even in private sector, places like that see increases in medical insurance. We are actually receiving a reduction. As mentioned, we are adding eight and a half positions and this includes all funds, not just in the general fund, but all of our funds. As a part of those eight and a half positions, we are adding two police officers. I know that it's been a comment, you know, from the citizens to continue putting more resources into our streets and patrolling and ensure that our neighborhoods are safe. So we are adding two police officers to our staff, which puts us more in alignment with the other cities around us in terms of how many police officers they have on staff per capita. Additionally, we're adding a fire inspector. One of the needs that we have within staff is to be able to visit all businesses of the city and be able to make those annual inspections that need to occur to make sure that our businesses are in compliance as well as they are doing everything that keeps the, the consumer safe and people and citizens that visit those establishments are safe. So adding a new fire inspector to our staff will ensure that they can get out to all the businesses and make the inspections they need to make. Another staff position that we're adding is a part time customer advocate. What we foresee for this position is having this person sit in our city hall lobby and they will be the face of Duncanville, if you will. They will be the ones that, you know, answer the phone calls and be able to, you know, address the walk in traffic that comes into city hall and to give a good first impression as people walk into our city hall and to improve our customer service experience. Some other highlights and public safety, as we mentioned, we are transferring another 1 million to the P25 compliant public safety radios. And for those citizens that may not be aware of what this project is, is that currently we do not have regional interoperability amongst our public safety with other county and other city public safety employees, police officers, fire staff, things like that. So what this project will be is that we are updating our updating our radio system, we're updating our interoperability with other agencies. And there's a lot of capital and upfront costs that comes to building new towers and updating the radios and things like that. So this will be the last, last amount of money that we are saving for being able to pay for all the upfront capital costs that's going to be associated with this. And this is a project that's going to be spearheaded by the Southwest Regional Communications Center, which is funded by the city of DeSoto. Another expense, there's the Tri-City Jail. We partner with the city of DeSoto to operate a Tri-City Jail. As you may remember, last fiscal year or this current fiscal year is the first year that we partner with the city of DeSoto to operate the jail. We no longer as the city of Duncanville operate our own jail. So there is an increase with that contractual agreement. Thirdly, there we have a partnership with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. The city of Cedar Hill operates the Tri-City Animal Shelter and we participate with them to our, our animal control officers do a great job and they the work that they do around our city, again, they work with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. And lastly, again, the Southwest Regional Communications Center, their, their cost has gone up and therefore all of the cities that partner with them are receiving an increase in that agreement. Capital Project Streets, we are transferring 1.3 million into the street CIP to cover much needed street projects. Important to note that the street does not have a regular source of funding other than what the general fund can support. Right now we do have excess money available in the fund balance that we can use to cover some of the street CIP. So that is, we're transferring that for those purposes. And lastly, another highlight is we are investing 100,000 for security cameras in Lake Side Park. And so after all of that is taken into equation, all of our revenues, all of our expenses. Again, like I said, this is a balanced budget for the general fund. So again, that means that our revenues exceed our operational expense. And why this slide is important to, for you to know is that at the end of the fiscal year, we are projecting 92 days of operation. And what that means is that we will have 92 days worth of resources in our bank to cover emergencies, the general, forgive me, the Government Finance Officers Association best practice is that we have 60 days of fund balance on in savings essentially. And what that means is that say we weren't receiving any more additional revenue, we would have at least 60 days worth of savings to be able to continue our operations. The three point millionaire shows you that that is what's left over after our 60 day reserve. So we have 3.0 million in additional resources available to us as we need. Okay, getting into the utility fund. Now, the utility fund is funded by your water bill, your water wastewater payments that you make for the, for consuming water. What's important to note here is that we are not projecting in this, in this next fiscal year, a water or wastewater revenue increase. However, that is something that we will with the council be discussing in the future. Possibly bringing back to raise the rates again in the future because this fund is this fund covers all the infrastructure for water wastewater projects and the cost of that is going up to be able to do all of the, you know, the materials, the labor and things like that, to be able to do those kind of projects. Something else to note is that we buy our water from the Dallas Water Utilities at wholesale. The volume rate for that has increased 13.2% over the current fiscal year. In addition to that volume, the city, we pay what's called the flat demand charge. So we have an agreement with the Dallas Water Utilities on how much water we need to have on hand in a day to be able to meet the demand of the citizens. This rate, this flat demand charge has gone up 7.3% over the current fiscal year. So overall, that increase to the utility fund comes through 388,000 over the current fiscal year that is not being passed along. Additionally, the Trinity River Authority is the entity that treats our wastewater. And we've seen this cost go up over the years as well. In, in the next fiscal year, 8.8% increase over the adopted budget of 338,000. So when you have those increases that we have to pay in order to meet the demand of the water and to meet the demand of the treatment charges of our wastewater as well as the cost of the CIP projects, the utility fund, we are spending down what fund balance we have. So here again is a snapshot at the end of the day, what our financial position looks like in the utility fund. As you can see that net change, again, that's all of the operational expenses as well as the, to cover our infrastructure and CIP projects and the increases in the Dallas water and the Trinity River Authority, we are spending down that fund balance. But currently, we project in the year with 161 days. And lastly, going into the solid waste, okay, this is the fund that we collect garbage, your garbage fees that you pay on your water bill. This pays for the garbage services and brush pickup and the special events that we may have for like hazardous household waste, things like that, all come out of this budget. Again, we're not projecting a rate increase at this time for this, for this fund, but that is something that we'll be discussing with council on, and moving forward on what we should be doing with our rates. There are two cost centers that come out of the solid waste fund. That includes a solid waste division, which only includes one employee, but the majority of the expenses are what we pay to republic for our landfill, for our garbage collection. The second thing is the litter control. We have four individuals that they, they rotate through picking up trash in the parks as well as picking up trash on our right of ways in the streets. We are projecting about a 1.4% increase of the garbage collection that's passed along to us from republic. We won't know for sure until September what that would look like, but we are assuming an increase there. So our financial position, as you see there in the, in the bottom chart there is again, we're spending down that fund balance to, to cover the garbage collection fees as well as this fund also supports alley reconstruction. And so we do make a transfer out of it to cover those alley CIP projects. So at this time, is there any questions that we have from any citizens? These are the, we just want to hit, hit the highlights of these three funds as those are the most prevalent to the citizens through your property tax dollars and through your water bill. But we will entertain any questions or comments that you might have at this time.
And if you could use your raise hand feature. Okay, Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer and Aretha for a very strong summation. And what I want to emphasize to our citizens that are participating today is that you're seeing a very high level summation of the budget process. The, I guess if you want, you know, what we talk about sometimes a business is a 50,000 foot level view. That's kind of what you've seen today is the 50,000 level foot view. But we as a council and staff are drilling down, we're actually subterranean, as I call it. We're below ground level when we get into line items and looking at what's going on in the budget. And that's what we've expended an immense amount of time doing is looking at line items and understanding the incomes and more importantly, the expenditures. It's a very important that Jennifer did mention several times that we do have a balanced budget. Jennifer, I'm going to ask you to explain very, very quickly at the very outset in showing our revenues as 63 million sum and expenses as 68 million sum. But you did say it's a balanced budget. For, for a novice looking at just pure numbers, when expenses exceed revenues, it says that that's kind of in the hole. But we do have a balanced budget because of the way the municipal accounting practices go with those fund balances. So do you have an elevator speech, you know, like two minutes or whatever to explain why we have a balanced budget? Whereas at the very outset, we had income of 63 and expenses of 68.
Sure, absolutely. So that total again, that you're seeing, I mean, that we've shown you the 63 million that encompasses all of our operational funds. So that's general fund, utility funds, all waste drainage, all of the funds that the city appropriates in the budget. And the expenses, it also include not just our operational expenses and that's really the what am I trying to say? But that, that's really, that's really where the balanced budget piece comes in. So our revenues have to, our operational expenses have to be covered by our revenues. Now where it seems more is from the one time projects. It's for example, the 1 million that we're transferring over into, to cover for our P25 that comes from excess fund balance, but it's still an expense as well as the 1.3 million that's going into street CIP to cover the street CIP projects that we have. Additionally, it cut, and you know, what's factored in there are the utility fund, the, the money that we use that goes towards the utility infrastructure replacements, things like that. So we are using excess fund balance for those capital improvement projects. But what's important to again, to remember is that its operational expenses are less than the revenues.
Right. And that's just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that to be able to communicate because the, the money is there and it's the manner in which those capital improvement projects, the, the big money projects are accounted for and the monies are available through our.
Yeah, question Mayor, Kadeen Collins, it looks like has a question.
Okay, let me just, let me get this. Okay, I'm going to allow you to, okay, Mr. Collins, are you there?
Hey there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you guys for this meeting. I'm a relatively new Duncanville resident, moved from Charlotte, Carolina a couple of months ago. So first town hall and just got a couple of quick questions. The first question is with regards to property taxes and I might've missed it, forgive me. Do we, is there any trends to sort of highlight whether or not the revenue from property taxes have increased year over year because of demographic changes? And because of, you know, there are more residents moving into the city? And then the second question I had was with regards to the investments, I saw that there was a decrease in terms of returns. Is that sort of outsourced to a fixed income shop or a different sort of fund management shop that takes care of that for the city?
So let's, we'll break your question into two parts, property tax trends. As far as our property tax, well, in the North Texas area, you'll find that values have increased. In fact, if you heard in the beginning, we talked about the Senate bill legislation that was enacted. It actually capped the amount of revenue that cities are able to obtain. If you look at this year's trend, you'll see that our values are increasing. Our residents may not be increasing as much as in Duncanville, but our values have been increasing throughout the North Texas area. This year we're seeing about a 10% increase in overall in the area. And so that has been a trend that has fallen all over the and so when you look at your overall values, that's the number one thing for us. When you get your investments, I'm going to ask Ms. Atmore to speak on the investments for the city.
Yes, sir. Um, the investments that we have, we invest our funds in accordance with the best practices in course with the Public Funds Investment Act. Um, the investments that we have, um, we invest our funds in accordance with um, um, the best practices, in course, with the Public Funds Investment Act. And a large part of those investments for the interest rates, because the Fed rate has decreased tremendously in the last year since the pandemic. So um, we've seen a decrease in the amount of interest that we're earning off of our investments.
Thank, Ms. Edmore. Let me clarify. So I guess what I'm asking is, is that function outsourced to like a lost cargo or, you know, i- i- a private investment shop? Like who's managing that part of it?
That, well, the staff and we've partnered with an investment advisors. We have investment advisors called Valley View Consulting and we partner with them in managing that portfolio. And so they they may do some solicitations and it and and guide us on investments and then we make the decision and actually uh, do the transaction um, with their guidance. So yes, it's a it's a partnership between us and uh, Valley View Consulting.
Got it. Understood. Thank, thank you, guys.
Uh, Mr. Collins, I want to interject something. Uh, if if you're into finances or doing personal investment on your own, um, this is, you know, uh, look at, you can see your Rita's smiling, uh, because she knows exactly where I'm going and so does Adina. I've asked, why can't we find investments where we can get more than point zero 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 five interest on our investments? And the answer is, and Adina covered it very quickly, there, the Public Funds Investment Act. It precludes municipalities from investing in where you and I would go to get greater investment return. Uh, we we're 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 kind of, we're bound, we're handcuffed by where we can go. Uh, particular money markets, particular CDs, particular funds. Uh, if you know, if you and I wanted to go and take that city money and try and find a, well, you know, what's good out there, let's be honest. A great CD rate out there right now is point oh five, a lousy CD rate is point zero 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 five. Uh, and that's what's kind of happening right now. So uh, yes, the our consultants, our financial advisors, Valley, they find the best possible return on our investment under the provisions of the Public Fund Investment Act, which really tells us that we have to be extremely conservative and capped in terms of where we can look. I just, you know, I just want to interject that so you get an idea of of why we're not making more money. And as as uh, Dina said, the the Fed and things, things are not in good shape in terms of investment right now. And we see no positive future for that, even as individuals or the cities looking for uh, for more investments. But, you know, uh, Adina uh, did provide counsel with a list of the investments that we have line by line by line. And we do have some investments that are coming to maturity uh, within the next few months. And so uh, Adina and Valley are aggressively looking at the possibility of of doing the best we can to get a little bit more interest on on our investment. So hope, hope that's just a little interjection for you.
Yeah, no, that's great and I appreciate that. And I agree. I mean, the fixed income markets have not, you know, you know, they they have not sort of kept to the precedent that that we've seen historically. See, I agree. I I thank you guys for the for the for indulging my questions and I'm uh, look forward to attending future town halls.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No more hands are up, Mayor.
Okay, well, uh, it's been uh, a great time. Uh, I wanted to thank staff for investing their time on Saturday and for the time invested in preparing this presentation for our city. It will be available for anybody to download and to look at in uh, any questions they may have in greater depth. Please feel free to email me or uh, Rita or Adina uh, to answer any more questions you might have. We are not done with the budget process. We call it the budget season. And that's where we're working towards. So as Rita said at the outset, we do have legislative requirements on submitting our budget and we're working toward that very uh, circumspectly to make sure we can meet those requirements. So with that, thank you very much. Thank you to all of our staff uh, that are, yeah.
One of the questions, um, is Mark, Mark Cooks. Of course, they're also welcome to email any one of your city council members uh, to base upon where you live. So feel free to contact us as well if you have questions in and you're in our particular district. The second one I do wanna ask, uh, there was a uh, public, there was a comment that was that you read off. Is there any questions that we need to ask on those comments that was public comment that was read off at the beginning of the session? Was there something we could answer on that?
Uh, tip, Mr. Cooks, uh, as you're aware, when citizen comments are made at the beginning of any meeting, uh, there is no discussion to be made on those.
Well, because the, because this is the town hall and and uh, some person couldn't make it online, seems as though it's not a typical public comment. It should be addressed as the virtual town hall.
May not be a typical public comment, but it is under the Open Meetings Act. And on the Open Meetings Act, we do subscribe to subscribe to those provisions as well. Plus the fact that Ms. Ebert did identify very into specific line items. And I don't believe that it's a, it's available for any of our staff to address those three line items that she provided uh, in any specificity at this time. It's only fair that we allow our staff the opportunity to look into greater detail and provide a response to Ms. Ebert uh, once like, once those line items could be looked at. Uh, those are her comments do have merit and we value her inputs.
Yeah, we need to make sure in the future then that we visit with our city attorney. Uh, especially if we're gonna do the virtual town hall this way to allow some of those questions to be answered. So city manager, if you would, would you visit back with our uh, city attorney to make sure how we overcome uh, those types of questions and see if it's a way to get those questions answered in the future if someone's not able to attend the uh, uh, the the meeting?
Uh, Mayor, I I, what I'd like to offer to uh, the council, you and council is that we will take all the questions. We will type up the questions and on our Facebook page as well as our website, uh, we will put the response to all of the questions submitted uh, available for all residents as well as for council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, city manager. Uh, seeing that there's no further inputs, no more raised hands, uh, thank you very much for everyone's participation. And uh, we are adjourning our virtual city council meeting for August the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at twelve oh six. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great blessed day.